Okay, so I will call the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission to order for, I lost my date, Wednesday, April 18th, 2018. Call rolls, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Here.
Commissioner Ieck?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell is absent this evening. Mayor Holliday.
Here. Please stand and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, tonight, I get to do, as you all know by now, one of my very favorite things. So we are going to give the oath of office to three Oregon City Police Officers. Before I read their names, well, actually, I'll do that. So for Officer Chris Brusseau, Officer Austin Pilcher, and Reserve Officer Sean Stringer. And I'll turn it over to Chief James Bam.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. So I'm going to just introduce real quickly the three gentlemen that we are swearing in. One is Chris Brusseau, who just got out of the police academy. Chris grew up in Gresham, Oregon, and Spokane, Washington. He's married to Ashley, wasn't able to be here tonight. Here with him are his kids, Colby and Luke. Where are you guys at?
Oh.
His father Kent Brusseau, and mother Tamara Rooney, and brother Beau Brusseau. Chris served in the Army National Guard from 2002 to 2010, and deployed to Iraq and Afghanistan. Prior to coming to Oregon City Police Department, he worked as Multnomah County Corrections Deputy. Austin Pilcher, grew up in Oregon City and graduated from Oregon City High School in 2011. Started Oregon City Police as a Reserve in 2016. His sister Ashley and her boyfriend Noah are here. Austin is a graduate of the University of Oregon with a bachelor's degree in social sciences. And prior to OCBD, he worked for Les Schwab. We've hired a couple Les Schwab people, and they hustle.
They don't let it run.
Sean Stringer, grew up in San Jose, California. His wife Nicola. And the three children, Martin Kennedy and Madeline. Graduate of Deans, a junior college in California. And prior to working here as a Reserve Officer, he worked for Milwaukee Police Department, where he came highly regarded by their chief and everybody else who worked there. So you guys want to come up forward here, and the chief's gonna, or excuse me, the mayor's gonna swear in?
I got promoted. So raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Austin Pilcher.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the law.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the law.
Support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics and the department's rules and regulations.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics and the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties as police officer or Reserve Officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
While faithfully performing my duties as a police officer for the city of Oregon City.
Congratulations.
So just photo ops, does anybody's family want to come up? Get a picture? Feel free, seriously.
Come on, get them kids up there. Too slow.
Are you good?
Oh, there's one more? I guess I was a little premature there. Or is it the glare coming off your head? If any of the relatives want to exit at this point, you're welcome to do so.
You're also welcome to stay.
So I am going to make a tiny adjustment to the agenda tonight. I sent out invitations to all of the candidates running for governor to come in and speak to the Oregon City Commission. So far, I've had one response, and that is Mr. Sam Carpenter. He's here tonight. Sam, you want to come up? Oh, Katie, you want to grab those?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead now, I'll see you right here.
How you doing?
I thought you were speaking into the mic.
You want me to sit down?
I do, I do want you to sit down, because we're on TV, and you need to have the microphone.
Okay. So greetings, everybody. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm a Republican candidate for governor, and I didn't know I was the first one to respond. That's pretty cool. I'm also leading in the polls, just for your information. And this isn't a sales pitch tonight, but you might as well know that, there's 10 of us. My background, well, I'm from Bend, let me tell you about that. Bend, two kids, two grandkids. And I'm up here, and we have a house in Salem, as we do the campaigning, it's a statewide campaign, so it's brutal.
Where'd the kids come from?
What's that?
Where'd the kids come from?
Where did the kids come from?
Curled.
Oh. Diana. Diana, they didn't come from Diana, okay?
I want to rephrase that, man.
This is my, this is my beautiful wife, Diana, very possibly your next First Lady. Okay? So you got about 15 minutes, so I'll be very quickly, very quick here. So my background is a very blue collar. I've been in Oregon for 43 years. I was blue collar up till about, oh, 30, 35 years of age. I did everything. I drove trucks, and I did heavy, I did all kinds of heavy equipment. I dug ditches, I flipped hamburgers, I scrubbed other people's toilets. I did it all in my twenties, and I did what I needed to do to survive. I worked for three separate trade unions, and then I kind of worked my way up, went through Forest Technical School, Forestry Technical School, back east, upstate, far, far upstate New York, not Yonkers, but way up. And I came out here to Oregon in 1975, which is before most of you were born, of course. So anyway, I've worked for the Forest Service for a while. I worked for electric utility down on the south coast. I went to Bend in 78, worked for an electric utility as a project engineer up there, and then bought my first business. I'm a business guy, that's what I do. I've been doing that for 35 years. I have a business in Bend that I've had for 34 years. And the same business, and I have about 50 employees. I have six of them who've been with me over 20 years, and I have two of those almost 30 years. I'm a pretty good CEO, okay? And I have another business. I wrote a book on business organization. It's a bestseller, it's in its third edition, it's 10 years old this month, for the first time it was published. I have a small business in Western Europe, in Romania. I've got four guys over there. And then I have a nonprofit in the far east, in a Muslim country. There was an earthquake in northern Pakistan and Azat Kashmir in 2005. Y'all remember the tsunami back in the south. Well, just after that, there was a horrible earthquake. And I went in there and flew in to assist, because I had fallen in love with the Karakoram Range. I'm a climber, and made some acquaintances, and I've had that nonprofit for 12 years. And we build schools, we put, one of our big projects is to go into a backcountry school and put pit toilets in. Pit toilets, septic-type toilets, because there's no running water in these schools. Most of the schools collapsed. School was in session. Tens of thousands of children died in 2005, October of 2005, over there. So that's kind of what I do. The marketing team in Europe, the nonprofit in Asia, and then my business is in Bend. The consulting business I have, based on this book, is something where my partner and I go around and we fix businesses. That's what we do. We fix businesses. And we fixed 500 businesses in the United States over the last eight years. We go in, we do it online, we do it on-site, we have programs to turn broken businesses around. I'm really good at it. And so what happened was, I ran for US Senate in 2016. Never been in politics before. Lost by a whisper in the primary. Some things, as an amateur, I didn't do. I didn't put my foot in my mouth. Not that bad, anyway. And I met Diana. She has a family in Kentucky, and I go back and forth from Kentucky since I met her about three years ago. We were very recently married. So we have a second house in Kentucky, but I live in Oregon. I brought my two kids up as a single parent in Oregon. I've had the business in Bend for 34 years. I'm an Oregonian. So anyway, what happened was, about a year ago, spring of 2017, I made the decision to run. I've endorsed, back in 2016, I endorsed President Trump, then candidate President Trump, and I still support the man. And it's the Trump-Pence agenda that I'm mostly interested in. I think it's good for economies, I think it's good for all of us and our individual lives. Now, that's my background, that's how I found myself here. What I'm really interested in is reducing the size of the state government. I want to go in there, I like to say I'm not going to go in with a scalpel, I'm going to go in with a chainsaw, and reduce the dysfunction and the size of the state government. What should happen is the money and the influence should come right back to these, these kinds of chambers, these councils. And I want to see more local control in every area. And I want to see, after traveling the state intensely with Diana for the last three months, I want to see a whole lot more control come local. The jackboot of bureaucratic restrictions need to be lifted on all aspects of the state, in all aspects of this economy. Whether it's Brookings with that Chetco bar fire down there, what they're not doing to rehabilitate the forests, and I understand that's US Forest Service. Up into the northeast, the wolf problem, the agricultural problem, the moratoriums on drilling water, it's one thing after another, one restriction after another. And I would like to lift that and see a booming economy here. It's the only way we're going to fix PERS is to have more taxpayers, and drive more money, and have a robust private sector. And you can talk about the forest, that way you can talk about almost any aspect of the economy, and the problems we have in this state can be cured with a robust economy. We need to have a robust economy, no matter what else we do. Now, one of my campaign promises is that I will do everything I can to have what we call a red trifecta. I understand there's some Democrats I'm talking to, bear with me, I'm a Republican. I want to see a Republican-controlled House and a Republican-controlled Senate, because as governor, then I'll be able to make big changes. And the big changes have to happen fast. There's all kinds of problems with having enough police officers, God bless these guys. More money coming in from the state for perhaps mental health, local mental health control here. My wife, Diana, has a whole career based on foster care and helping families when there's drug abuse and alcohol abuse problems. She's got a whole career, and she'd be a very active First Lady in that regard. But what I want to do mostly is I want to get the state government to be efficient. Now, we all know about the debacles, the most recently is the phone system is $60 million, and then there was the exchange with $300 million, never used, and the bridge study, couple hundred million. Those are the things we read about in the paper, but it's the everyday dysfunction that I'm especially concerned about. Not making those big mistakes, of course, but we want to get in, and sometimes there's a layer of management that's five-deep that really needs to be three-deep. And so the state government needs to be brought under control. We're being overtaxed and overregulated, and it needs to be fixed. And I need to talk in generalities, I don't have enough time to go into details on the various subjects. But I will say this, I have a background in forestry, I have a technical degree in forestry, I'm very interested in doing what we have to do over here, and that way, too. Coast range, Douglas fir, the true firs, and the ponderosa pines, and so forth, over on the east side. There is so much that can be done there to revitalize our small towns, because there's 275 towns in this state with less than 5,000 population, and it is the new inner city. You've all been through them, you know what I'm talking about. Bend is an old logging town that lucked out. But there's a lot of logging towns out there that are not lucked out. They're having an awful time, and of course, our forests are burning, and y'all had to smell it last summer. It's a matter of mismanagement. And what I want to do, I'm a CEO, I want to manage things. I want to manage the, PERS needs to be managed right away, it has to happen fast, the forests need to be managed. It all needs to be managed and not left up to some political ploys, or power struggles, or just debilitation of bureaucracy in Salem. It's what I do, is fix organizations, and like I said, I'm good at it. So I'm just kind of, as a business guy, and as a fix-it business guy, of course, fix-it business guy, I'm very, very interested in getting into Salem and making some waves and getting some changes done. And we could go through 1, 2, 3, 4 with what needs to happen with PERS, and it does have to do with keeping the retirement plans for anybody who's working now, or anybody's retired would not lose their plan, but all new hires need to go on a 401K-type contribution plan. And on down the line, I have generalities I can talk to you about, but what I need to do is get in the middle of the machine. And so my partner and I, and our associates, have worked in over 300 different industries. Like I said, we've worked on 500 businesses, we really have not had a failure. We don't know a thing about any of those industries when we walk in the front door. We don't need to, we don't need to, we need to know how to set up an organization with documentation and processes and systems that will make that company fly. And sometimes some personalities have to leave. Sometimes people, certain people need to leave that's in the organization and not working for the organization. It's what I talk about in my book, and it's how I run my business. And my business is a call center in Bend, the one business in Bend is a call center, and I have 50 people. And as I said, a lot of those people have worked for me for a long time, but I also say they're very, very highly paid, and I run a 33% profit margin in my business, when my industry's typical profit is 5%. So I would just love, in this lifetime, to get into the middle of this big organization, of this state that I love so much. I came out here for the big trees, and I find myself in this, and sometimes I think it's an odd position of being able to do something to help you folks on the local level especially, and the people in Salem and all across this state. I'm a small-town guy, I have an affinity for eastern Oregon and a beautiful coast range down here. I can run a chainsaw like anybody. And I would really, really like to see the smaller towns, and I have to qualify this one as a smaller town, it's 35,000, Mayor. I would like to see you folks have the money you need, and the resources from the state to be able to do what you need to do. And I know a little bit about Oregon City, and I know what you've done with the downtown, and I know what you're doing down on the river. And of course, it's almost a destination stop, right? Because it's the end of the Oregon Trail, you're the oldest city in Oregon Incorporated, at least. And Oregon City has a good reputation all over Oregon. I wish I knew it a little better. But I would like to do what I can to be partners with you, not to dictate what you do, but to be partners and take the resources in the state that we have to help you get where you want to get to. Because all you, all you, most of you here are probably volunteers, and you're doing this because from your guts, you want to see your town be better. And from my guts, from the guts of a real CEO comes this desire to fix and build and just make things better. And y'all know what I'm talking about, you wouldn't be here if you didn't have this, this drive in your belly to just make things better in your lives, especially for your families.
So, anybody have questions? Okay. Thanks, Sam, appreciate you coming.
You want me to leave a few of these in the back?
Sure, you can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to...
Citizen comment.
PC...
Citizen comment.
Oh, citizen comment. Do we have anybody?
Yes.
Okay, hang on, I'm not on the right page.
Just guess.
Father time.
William Gifford. Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. I know you're shocked. A few things on my mind, and I'm always impressed to see our new members of the force, of course, that excites me greatly, and I'm glad that we're doing such a good job, that we can attract such great talent. I was at the high school this morning, giving a presentation, they have career spotlight days. This is the second time I've been invited out there to talk about, about business, and how they can have a career in business. It's pretty exciting. I also wanted to mention that this coming Tuesday, well, it's next Tuesday, is the OCBA's monthly presentation, and this month, we are having Jonathan Stone and Carol Pauley coming, talking about, not so much about the award that we all won, but how they're going to leverage that, what are they going to do to improve that. And I believe tonight is the last night available for purchasing tickets. If you haven't, if you haven't got them, I'd encourage you to go ocbusinessalliance.com and pick up a couple tickets. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, William.
Thanks, William.
Okay, now we're on to PC 18-06, first reading of ordinance number 18-1005, amending the development sections of the Oregon City Municipal Code, including lot averaging, planning file L 17-04, Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much, Assistant City Attorney Carrie Rector. I'll just remind you of your disclosures.
There are markings, this is a legislative proceeding. So, didn't I do a good job?
All right, thank you very much. So we are back again, we've been before the City Commission once before, and this purpose of this project is just to do minor code amendments. There are a couple more major items that we'll talk about. Last time we met, we had agreed on all of the proposed code amendments, it sounded as though the City Commission had, with the exception of one thing. Thank you very much. So again, this code will do a couple efficiencies, streamlines, things like that, but it's really just a quick and easy code change. Lot averaging, that was the biggest topic of this package. Where we left was to retain the existing language, but add that power line easements may not be considered in lot averaging. The one outstanding item was a code amendment as it relates to fencing as a building material. And so currently, we don't allow chain link fencing generally, and prohibited in visible locations. This proposed amendment would, I added some clarification that visible locations means right-of-way or public access easement. And then also, we had previously had in that code amendment that we would exempt chain link fencing to be allowed in stormwater facilities, and then the code amendment from last time was to also allow chain link fences in the general industrial district when it's visible from the street and from neighboring properties. I did include in your packet two sets of code, one with the code, with the amendment to allow chain link fencing in industrial area, and one without. If you're wondering where the industrial-zoned area is, here is a very colorful map. So we do have a lot of industrial properties that act like industrial areas when you drive down the street, but they're not zoned industrial. So we're looking at purely the zoning designation. So the purple blob on the bottom part of the screen, you could think of as Fur Street. On the northern part of the screen, or the upper part of the screen, you could think of as Clackamas River Drive on the southern side of 205, and then on the northern side of 205, it is the West Facility and around there. And then we have this slice of property that's generally in the river, near the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, which is PGE and the dam. So those are the three areas of the city that if this code amendment was approved, we would allow chain link fencing from, visible from the right-of-way and public access easements.
So the general industrial district downtown is, is all on the mill site?
No, it's in the water, because our zoning, actually, our city limits go to the middle of the river, and so it's, a lot of it is the PGE dam.
Okay, but not...
The Willamette Falls Legacy Project has its own zoning designation, which is not general industrial. To know.
I'm, I still am confused about the sites, then.
Think about walking out the dam.
When you...
Self, that's PGE property.
Right.
PGE is zone, general industrial.
PGE is zoned, general industrial. The dam.
Okay, all right, all right, all right.
All of the property included in the Willamette Falls Legacy is the Willamette Falls Legacy...
But all of that area is generally contained by the Legacy Project site? As a layman would think about it.
The Willamette Falls Legacy is zoned to allow for a mixed-use industrial, PGE is zoned, a general industrial.
But the PGE piece is all surrounded by...
Yes.
...the Legacy Project site.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to get to, okay.
My apologies. With that, we recommend approval of the first reading, approval of planning file L 1704 and the first reading of ordinance 18-1005. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Nope.
Hold on. Ian, you need to fill out a form in the back. So I'm going to recommend that we do this in two pieces. So let's agree on the, on the piece about lot averaging. Is there a motion?
Or do you want to wait and take the public testimony first?
Not on this one. That's not where, that's not where that public testimony is going to hit. So, does somebody have a motion as far as the lot averaging piece? So we'll do a motion and another motion, and then we'll do a final motion that contains both, okay? Just so we can get agreement on, on both of them. Run that together, please.
I'm a little confused, because we did that last week, at our last meeting.
I know, I know, and I, but I promised Commissioner O'Donnell, we would take these individually.
Okay.
So I'm going to say, we're going to, we're going to say, we, whatever the motion is as far as agreeing with the language on the lot averaging piece, so it's in, it's in the documents somewhere.
Okay, move to approve PC 18-056, ordinance number 18-1005, amending the development sections of the Oregon City Municipal Code, including lot averaging, but not including Exhibit A. That's not...
There you go, very good. Nice.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Call roll, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Ieck?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, now, we're going to talk about chain link fence, and there is one person to come speak, Mr. Ian Ford. Oh, apparently, Mr. Gifford has some comment as well. So Mr. Ford, Mr. Gifford, please come up. State your name and city residence for the record, or how you're associated, either way.
Okay. My name is Ian Ford. I work at Optimize Technologies, we're in the district up at, up on First Street. I've worked there for most of my life, for about 10, 15 years. It's a family-owned company, and we manufacture products for medical testing field, and we And we are expanding right now and so we're really excited about that and we're happy to create some more jobs. And one of the things that we're going through are kind of security issues right now and we've had them. And unfortunately, we didn't put up our chain link fence earlier, but we've had these issues for a long time and finding hypodermic needles in the, you know, in, in back lot where we're going to build. So, with these issues and building a new facility and having the car break-ins, we want to address it and all of our neighbors have chain link fencing. And in fact, we'd be pretty much linking up to theirs, we'd be adding other sections, but all of our neighbors have it and they put in, we've had a couple neighbors put in chain link fencing afterwards. So we just want to be able to secure our property and make sure that we have a safe working environment for our employees.
So to be clear, your mom and dad own the company?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Gifford.
Things while I'm staring at this slide, I noticed a couple of other things. Is this, excuse me, Mr. Turway, is, is this the proposed wording?
No.
Because I noticed the current says chain link fencing and the proposed just says chain link. That's observation number one. Observation number two is I'm not quite sure where that extra parentheses is at the end of the proposed wording.
It's a test.
Kind of hanging out. Is it a test? And, generally, the word generally seems to me to leave a lot of latitude. Maybe that's just the way to get around not making it locked down and giving an option? And maybe the word generally is generally accepted, but generally, I think it's kind of loose and maybe that's what we want. But I just wanted to make those observations.
Thank you for thoroughly confusing me.
I can read the specific language. All that language is made up by me to translate what's in the code. If you would like me to read the code language, I can.
That would be good.
All right, so, at the top of a section, it says prohibited materials. The following materials shall be prohibited in visible locations from the right-of-way or a public access easement unless an exception is granted by the community development director based on the integration of the material into the overall design of the structure. And then it lists the things that are prohibited. The thing that it lists for chain link fencing says, chain link fencing except for temporary purposes such as a construction site, gates for a refuge enclosure, stormwater facilities, or within the general industrial district.
So the change we're making is adding within the general industrial district?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'm not prohibited from making a motion, am I? No, I don't think so.
Yes, you are.
May I make a comment before you do that?
Sure.
So, from what I understand, that the, that when Commissioner Mengeleberg did the first reading for this ordinance, it included both the lot averaging and...
No, she, she exempted Exhibit A, which is what we're talking about.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Right?
Right.
So, I'm going to, once again, argue that if you drive, and I have visited now all three, not realizing that, that PGE was part of the general industrial area, but I've visited all these places. And if you go to these places, if you drive down First Street, the optimized site is probably one of the very few, if not the only one, that doesn't have chain link. If you go down to Clackamas River Drive and turn left off of Clackamas River Drive, anywhere along there, you know, all of those facilities have some kind of chain link fencing or another. It doesn't make sense, at this point in time, to exclude one company from being able to do what everyone else around them is already doing. And we aren't opening up any gates because, you know, we're clearly limited by these general industrial areas and the stuff out on, on Beaver Creek Road is never going to be general industrial, it's something else altogether. So, we're not, you know, really setting any real precedent here. So I would appreciate a motion to approve Exhibit A.
Move to approve Exhibit A.
Second.
Is there any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Nay.
Commissioner Eide?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay.
Can we have a motion now that we've got the whole thing complete to approve ordinance number 18-1005, so I can do the reading of the title, please?
Sure.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance number 18-1005, amending the development sections of the Oregon City Municipal Code, including lot averaging, planning file L 17-04. Do I need to say...
Moved by Commissioner...
Which includes Exhibit A.
Yeah. Moved by Commissioner Eide, second by Commissioner Shaw, Ms. Richter.
Ordinance number 18-1005 and ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending the Oregon City Municipal Code Title 16 Land Divisions and Title 17 Zoning.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Eide?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, PC 18-037, first reading of ordinance number 18-1004 for LE 17-03, legislative amendment to amend Chapter 12.O4.205 to the Oregon City Municipal Code for Alternative Mobility Standards for the Highway 213 intersection at Beaver Creek and the Transportation System Plan Project List, Ms. Turway.
Long title. Thank you. This is also legislative amendment, so we will skip the disclosures. This project is referred to as alternate mobility targets. It has a variety of other names, but in all of it, we're looking at essentially the intersection of Beaver Creek and 213 and we're looking at identifying a solution in our transportation system plan. So, what the problem is, is that, can you believe, five years ago, we adopted a transportation system plan. It's been a while. And when we adopt transportation system plans, we take our zoning designations, we assume that all those properties get built out, we put it into a larger metro model, assume all those properties within the region get built out, and then we measure the congestion at our intersections. And we have a limit of how much congestion can be at the intersections. So, we run these models, we find intersections where they're, they're too busy or busier than they are allowed to be, and so we come up with public improvements. In the case of Beaver Creek and 213, we identified public improvements and in fact, there was one in the 2001 TSP, which is the prior version. However, they weren't feasible. So, in this case, it was a grade separated intersection by today's dollars, which is more than $50 million. And since we didn't have $50 million to spend, when we adopted the TSP, we sort of put it aside and said, let's do a project to take a look at this intersection and really a corridor in greater depth. And let's work as a community to identify a solution. So, as a condition of approval of the TSP, we said we would look at alternate mobility standards or adopting a solution within two years. Now, it's been five years, but it took us, this project took a few years to go through. So, that is with the problem. We work together as a community to identify a solution. There's a lot of people on that board and you're not expected to have read it, but we hired Kittleson and Associates to do technical work and also facilitate a, a variety of advisory groups. We had a technical advisory group and a citizen advisory group as well, representing a large number of stakeholders. We know that this intersection, which is on a state facility and it's Beaver Creek, has two different jurisdictions too, so throw three jurisdictions in the mix. ODOT who owns Highway 213, Oregon City owns Beaver Creek on one leg and then on the far leg is Clackamas County. So, we work together to run more transportation models, now that it's been five years, and see if we still have a problem and see what are options for solutions. So we met a bunch. And I also don't expect you to read these, but just know that we had, over a long period of time, lots of meetings and I would say even more than these meetings and a longer period of time with discussions between us and particularly ODOT and how to move forward. We are the first for many things and unfortunately, we are, were the first in the metro region to look at the adoption of alternate mobility targets or the first to update our TSP and say, we have an intersection and we don't have a feasible solution to fix it transportation-wise. It's complicated. It's complicated for a lot of reasons. One is that we have to come up with a solution. We have a TSP, we have a condition of approval, but we have an obligation to identify solutions for transportation in our community. But, there's only so much money and we only own part of the intersection and we worked for years trying to see if that we would have partners to fund this or is there a way to get larger sums of money? And it's been very difficult and the answer was no. It's, ODOT has other places and they've been very forthright about, they would put their money in other places and the county does too. And so, Oregon City funded this project and we're looking at funding the solutions for this intersection too. It's not just local traffic, a majority of traffic through this intersection doesn't start or stop in Oregon City. So regardless of any growth that may or may not occur in Oregon City, it is a regional problem. This Highway 213 is significant to Clackamas County and a lot of people rely on it. There is only so much money and we do receive a lot of money for transportation improvements through SDCs or system development charges. That means when development comes in, they pay a fee, that fee goes to add capacity improvements to our transportation system throughout the city. So you need growth to fund the transportation improvements in that sense. We also, we knew that we didn't have a solution and so we basically said, if your use is permitted, come on in, right? So we know we're going to come up with a solution soon, so come on in if your development is permitted. We'll keep track if your trips go over the amount of acceptable congestion, but we'll come up with a solution. And it's not until we come up with a solution that the city can adopt the solution and get money to fund the solution. So right now, we put a couple of quick and easy fixes in our old TSP and we said, we'll work on a bigger solution or maybe a package of more improvements later. And so now we're back with that package of more improvements. The improvements look at two things, capacity and safety, and they also look at capacity and safety improvements for all modes of transportation. So what we want is a transportation system network where you can go five different ways and you can go those five different ways, maybe by car, bike, or walking. If you don't bike, you don't have to bike, but we want to make it easier for other people to bike. Transportation is expensive and here is a snapshot of what is in our 2035, which is our transportation system plan. So, this gets a little jargony, but financially constrained means funded or likely to be funded. And then unfunded is a large amount. So, you can see on A, down below, 109 million, that's coming from SDCs, which is coming from new development. You're seeing some projected funding, so in B below, coming from grants and things like that. And then you're seeing how that pays for what is in the TSP, which is likely to be built. And then we have another thing out there, which is stuff that might not like, is not likely to be built. When we have our transportation system plan, we can't just throw every project in the world in there, we have to have some reasonableness to it. So we can't say, here's, I want every sidewalk perfect and I want every, everything perfect. There has to be some test that the unfunded portion at least isn't a reasonable amount of unfundedness. It's not a wish list, in other words. So, we were talking about improvements and the big grade separated intersection improvement that was in the prior TSP that we hear referenced a lot through our project is more than $50 million. And so, you might want to know what that means. So, knowing that we are the only ones who are paying for $50 million, here's a snapshot of what $10 million is, so times everything by five. So if you were to charge the number of households in Oregon City for $50 million, it would be five times $769. If it's just the new households, so maybe only new households pay for this growth, again, we're acknowledging that most of this growth is in Oregon City. That's 1,250 times five. And then all future households, you can see the split there. All right, so what we did is we worked together to come up with a recommendation, which I'm about to tell you in a minute, and it includes both those safety and capacity projects for a variety of modes. And then it also includes an alternate mobility target, which I'll talk about as well. So what are the projects? We adopted three new projects in our transportation system plan and then we also slightly revised one pedestrian project. The Biggie project, I'll show you in just a second, is a new merge lane onto, onto 213. So if you are coming from the college on Beaver Creek Road and you want to hang a right to go to, to 205, that's what we're talking about. There is a right turn lane there now, but we're talking about its own lane, so then it can merge into 205, 213 throughout the time. There's also some sidewalk infill projects in there and some other safety improvements. We already had in the TSP some minor safety improvements, so we aren't adding those, but we're just filling out our package to make it safer for all modes of transportation. So, some capacity and some safety improvements. Here is the Biggie that we were talking about. So this is what the group decided upon, which was a reasonable transportation improvement. One, so the intersection has a lot of lanes. So cars are going every which way and depending on when you get to the intersection, like what time of day and which way you're going, some are really busy and some are not really busy. One of the busier ones is this right here. So you can see on the aerial photograph that we already have this lane, but you're kind of merging right onto the two lanes on 213. So what this would do is add this really long merge lane, we have to do shoulders and that kind of thing, so you can get into 213. So what that does is it means not as many cars are stuck on Beaver Creek Road wanting to turn right and they get through and it makes the intersection function much better. And so there's a guard rail system as well. So, we talked about when we measure congestion, intersections being complex and different...
Can we go back to that map, just one second?
Yes.
So, you don't quite show enough of Beaver Creek Road. Would there be a, a dedicated right turn lane on Beaver Creek Road all the way from Maple Lane down to the intersection of 213?
It does not really change the configuration for the right turn lane on Beaver Creek Road.
So are there three lanes that go all the way from, from Maple Lane to 213?
No.
On that side of Beaver Creek Road?
It's just what there is now.
One's a left turn and two straight.
There's two left turns, two through lanes.
Oh, yeah.
And, and this right turn lane, which transitions to that right turn between Maple Lane and 213. And that's not proposed to change.
Okay.
But you would have the free flowing capability.
At this point in time, is, are, are cars that are wanting to turn right from Beaver Creek Road onto 213, are they stacking up beyond Maple Lane?
At times, yes.
So this could relieve some of that?
This would relieve a lot of that.
Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
So, intersections are complex, transportation engineering is complex. We do have people who know more about it than us in the audience. We have our consultant transportation, John Riplinger, Riplinger and Associates. He is our city transportation consultant. We also have Dana Webb, who's our project manager on this as well. So, we measure congestion a couple of different ways. The Biggies are volume to capacity and level of service. It depends what the intersection is. If it's a busy intersection with a light, it might make sense to do volume of capacity over level of service. That's a little jargony, so I don't want to get into it, but there are many movements that average to get an overall volume to capacity number. So we're taking, you know, the left turn lanes and the straights and the rights and we're averaging all of that to get a volume to capacity. Volume to capacity is, the volume is how many cars physically fit in the intersection and the capacity is, so how, the timing for which they go through. So, how many cars through how much can go through the intersection? Here is a graph of Beaver Creek and 213. These numbers were taken in May of this year. I've heard a lot of people say that the intersection Beaver Creek and 213 is already broken. This is showing us that it's not broken because what broken is, is .99, is above .99. So right now, today, you can get up to .99, which is a relative measure of volume, for the two peak hours. So, if you figure out hour... hours. So if you figure out hour by hour, how many cars are flowing through that intersection, the two busiest can't be more than .99. Today, this is showing that what we call the PM peak in the late afternoon is sort of, you get a bump up in the morning and you get a bump there in the afternoon. And it's, it might be different movements of that intersection, right? Because you average different, the cars are going different places through different times of day. Maybe they're leaving in the morning and coming home at night. Alright, so alternative mobility target, now that we've had our lesson on view over see, our existing one is .99 for the first two hours. We calculate it based on the 30th highest hour. The 30th highest hour means you figure out all the hours of the year. And the 30th highest of the year is the 30th highest hour. You can kind of think of like Christmas season, so it's busy. It's 30th highest hour. So it can't be more than .99 during that kind of season. What we're proposing to do is to raise it from .99 to 1. So we're just raising it by a very small amount, .99 to 1.00. And we're measuring 1.00 for three hours, not two. So before we were just looking at the first two, now we're saying for the first three, you have to consistently show that you're not going above 1.0. And we're also calculating it based on the average annual weekday, which, think of a May, May day. Here you can see on the bottom, the graph with the right turn lane and without the right turn lane. So that'll give you a sense to, are we building in buffers just in case we're higher than we think? And in some cases, a little bit, and in other cases, no. We want to make sure that when we raise the acceptable level of congestion, that we are not being excessive about it. We were being modest and we are being true to what our numbers say. Are there questions on alternate mobility targets? Okay. So how do you know if you should approve this or not? There is approval criteria for you and it includes referencing our comprehensive plan and a bunch of other plans too. As you can imagine with transportation, there's a lot of rules and regulations that we have to meet, like regional transportation plans and so forth. We did get support for alternative mobility targets from a variety of groups. You can see them on the screen. John has a couple of pictures and most of them, he's sitting in the passenger side. On the other ones, I'm not so sure. You can get a sense of general.
I'm assuming those were taken while stopped.
In the passenger. Somebody was holding a phone. Anyway, so you can get a general sense of how busy it is. I mean, we all go through it often, so we all kind of know how busy it is. It's certainly a lot less busy than many intersections you could think of, say in Beaverton or other places throughout the region. We are just the first to identify it as not meeting our mobility standards in 2035. So that means we are the first to go through this process and we expect many more to come. We also expect that the region as a whole is going to address this issue and look at regional, perhaps maybe regional, transportation mobility targets as well. Okay, so we are almost there. Here's a summary. We wanted to change the alternative mobility target to go from .99 to 1 for three hours a day instead of two, add a couple of projects. That is what this package consists of. We did go before the planning commission and we received a recommendation for approval, but they sent a separate letter with some policy advisory. We do have two, a couple of members of the planning commission here as well. I'm going to tell you what, generally what their concerns were. And so it's separate from the legislative file. It's just a policy advisory up to the city commission and then John is, wants to talk about some of those as well. So one is to annually measure near Highway 213, Redland Road and Holcomb. And so it's a request to the city commission that the public works department measure that annually to identify how congestion goes over time. So you can analyze that. And then the second one is dealing with Holly Lane and it's a request to not do public improvements on Holly Lane. So to keep it, retain that rural character and to also do a geologic study anytime before you build anything on it anyway.
Do we own any piece of Holly?
So in the region, in the urban growth boundary, we have a little piece of both of Holly. And then in the middle, it's county. So if you look, go all the way to our urban growth boundary, we will have sections of Holly in the long run. So just the two ends of it.
But currently, we don't.
Currently, we don't. The other thing I would say is, remember we were talking about transportation system plan, is that ours is five years old. We redo them out every 10 years. So you would expect us to kind of take a look at the transportation system plan in another five years or so. Okay. Beyond that, now John just wants to talk a little bit about some of the policy advisory.
A little bit, a little bit. So the request that the planning commission has made, I understand. There's always this desire for more data, better, better establishment, whether or not it's getting worse or better, figuring that out as early as you can. The problem I have with it is it's an extra piece of work that requires public works to go out and do something that we don't typically do every year. We have, we collect data on Holcomb Boulevard near Redland Road every three years and that's been the cycle that we've been on for some time now. And I think it's, it's a good baseline. We've shared that information with the transportation advisory committee recently and I'll show you a slide of that. But we, so we collect the data every three years. We'd like to remain on that cycle and not have a special traffic count requirement for every year. We also recognize that just having that data doesn't necessarily give you much more justification for change or indication of how much worse it's getting. From year to year, we see that data bouncing around from time to time and based on the three-year averages, we're actually seeing it bounce around a little bit as well. So the overall impacts of big development, like the annexation and some of the projects that are coming in, are better served by way of the transportation analysis that the developers required to do. So we all, in addition to the data that we collect citywide every three years, we, we have those traffic studies. So we, we think it's an unnecessary measure. I understand why it was brought forth. There's, at the planning commission level, there's lots of people in the audience that talk about the concern for congestion. If you've lived there a very, very long time, you notice some increase in traffic. There's been a lot of development in the Park Place area and, and other areas outside the city. We're, we're seeing a lot of county influx of traffic coming through Holcomb Boulevard. So I, I get it. One of the things that we did at the transportation advisory committee, there was a desire for a park place analysis to be done. So we took a lot of that historic data. We, we took data from 2004 and then every three years thereafter through 2017, we kind of put that into a spreadsheet and this represents some of the data that we, in terms of volume and speed. So each of those blue dots represents where we collect traffic data and we have for several years. And then we took the comparison over those, for those, those years and took kind of the worst case scenario. So anything in red represents an increase in volume, anything, or, or increase in speed, one of the two depending. And anything in green, suggests that things have actually dropped. So it's, it's, it's a little hit and miss. It's almost a little hard to find conclusions. Generally, it looks like the volumes are going up, but the speeds are going down. And so that's also been a concern for the neighborhood is just speeding increases. We hear that all the time. I'm not saying that we don't have speeders out there, but when we look at the averages, we're seeing reduction in speed for the most part.
Jim?
Yes, does it, does, microphone?
Yes. So is, is the traffic teams spending any time on Holcomb?
Uh huh.
Yeah, they're kind of everywhere.
Is that from firsthand knowledge?
Yes.
Never told me about it.
Okay, that's all I, that's all I wanted.
So the other little piece I want to share is, as Laura mentioned, you know, this isn't a, this is a moving target. Transportation is a moving target for us. We're always looking at additional funding. We're always looking at different funding scenarios from the regional model. The transportation system plan is five years young and we're going to, you know, be looking at that every 10 years. It's, it's a long range look. I, I just, you know, that combined with the fact that we're in a regional center, we're typically in a regional center in the metro area, they allow more time for congestion. And so, you know, this intersection happens to be in a regional center. Again, I think the impression of how bad it is, is when, when that intersection becomes, it's a big problem, is usually associated with something problematic on 205. So it's backing out on 213. I mean, 205 is backing out onto 213, which is then affecting the side streets. And I think that's what the neighborhood sees mostly. So we'll, you know, the other little piece that I'll add is in the regional transportation plan, we're still recommending that the Redland 213 intersection be improved to add an additional lane in each direction. So we're, we're not saying that there's no project there. We're just saying that it, it, we, we don't think we need the traffic counts is really what, what I want to get to. Holly Lane, generally, I think the recommendation was that we should reduce the number of projects that are in our transportation system plan so that there is no impacts to Holly Lane. And that was a bit of a surprise to me because it feels a little bit like some of the counter that we've heard from the community about Beaver Creek and 213 needing a, a larger project, a larger scale project in the T S P. So it's kind of an inverse of that. They're suggesting maybe we have less projects on there or figure out a better certainty about the timing of those. So we've got quite a few projects that are listed in the T S P for Holly Lane and many of them are not likely to be funded. But again, this is a long range plan. I think the development along Holly Lane is quite some time out. But I still think it's good for us to plan for these projects in our transportation system plan. I think, wanted to share with you just a kind of an excerpt from the Park Place Concept Plan, just to show you kind of some of the development or remind you about some of the kind of development that was proposed out Holly Lane, out the Holly Lane direction. I, you know, I understand folks that live along Holly Lane may object to some of these kinds of developments out there, but that was what was adopted through the Park Place Concept Plan. And again, we're moving forward with the planning for that and we think it's the right thing to do to put that in the transportation system plan. There was concerns about the geologic hazard areas along Holly Lane. So that's been raised as a reason for not doing improvements along Holly Lane or not get, you know, making Holly Lane whiter.
I'm confused why we're spending any time on this, to be honest. It's not inside our jurisdiction. It's not likely to be inside our jurisdiction.
I would say the end near Redland Road is likely to be inside our jurisdiction. So you're right, the whole length of it, not. So we're just, I'm just trying to address these problems and I just think that they're, they're issues, but they're not insurmountable issues. So we, we need, I think we need to continue planning and not eliminate them from our transportation system plan. Again, just kind of acknowledging that there's more traffic up there than maybe has in the past, but it's not that bad. That's it.
And so the package is really for alternate mobility targets, which includes those additions to the T S P for new projects as well as amending the acceptable level of congestion from .99 to 1 with the nuances that we talked about earlier. We're here to answer any questions you have. We have a bunch of staff in the room to do the same as well.
Questions?
Mr. Shaw? So Laura, you, so we have $8,800 per household S D Cs going into transportation. Is that what I saw on there?
Sounds about right.
That's, I mean, that's, I took it off your slide.
Oh, that was if we.
So right down here on the bottom.
Yeah, I think these are older, these are older numbers. We had the transportation S D C increase recently that you adopted.
I was trying to think because it's like, it's about $24,000 per household for S D Cs right now.
Yeah, so for a single family rate, the S D C went up to $10,556 or something. I don't quite remember the number, but it's gone up.
And the, and the transportation side of S D Cs were known for, well, we're kind of in the middle of everybody else. I understand that. But it seems like the S D Cs for transportation on our end were higher than sewer parks and everything else.
That's true. Yeah, we're, we're, and for a single family home, we're about median across the region. For commercial, we were, we were high based on our methodology. I think a lot of that reflects the, the difference between heart growth versus Milwaukee, Lake Oswego, other kind of communities like that. And, and just kind of the complexity of our projects with the, the topography that we have and some of the steep slopes and the landslide areas. So our projects tend to be a little more expensive.
I was just a little surprised at that number because, so that means like about 14,000 is going to parks and sewer and stuff. And I thought maybe the transportation was getting a bigger bite of that. So that's why I was reasoning, well, maybe parks and sewer wasn't getting as much, but it just kind of surprised me that that number was that high for transportation. And it seems like these other departments should have been getting more money. So.
And then is generally the T S P, the approach that we took in the T S P was we made transportation improvements where we need to, where we really took an equity focus because a lot of these improvements that you have for vehicles, for roadways are super expensive. So if we only have so much money to spend, we did allocate a lot of that money towards bike and pet improvements around the city. So it's not like we're spending all of our money in one certain part of the city. So we made sure that as, in general, the T S P took a very equitable approach and making sure everyone could get around the city better.
Yes, I like that. So I guess the other thing was this 213 intersection, it's county and state.
And city.
Well, no, because the county Beaver Creek side is running into the state side onto 213. It's not city at all, but we're paying for it.
So yeah, the, the.
Okay.
The free flowing right turn lane that we're projecting comes off of the county's leg of Beaver Creek and turns on to the state's leg of 213.
Right.
That's true.
Yes, but we're paying for it. The city's going to pay for it.
It's, it's in the list of projects that we're collecting, I think about $5 million worth of transportation S D Cs.
You hit the crux of the nail on the head is that we have an obligation to solve this problem. They might not, might not be roads in our jurisdiction and we might not be getting funding from other places. So we've got to solve other people's problems.
But then, and, and the other argument to that is, is that without this, we can't do any of, we won't collect any of the S D Cs on the east side of Beaver Creek Road.
I know, that was my concern here.
And we do benefit from it as well.
Okay. So the other thing was, so with John, with your, your, the traffic studies like on Holcomb, does the project on the very top of Holcomb now, and I'm pretty sure they're probably putting streets in there right now.
Abernathy Landing.
Yeah. Did, when they did a traffic study there, how, how far did they have to do their study? Because a lot of times I know on planning, there was always this issue about the, it doesn't get stretched out far enough where this traffic goes. So did this, does that traffic study go down to Holcomb, the one that Abernathy did?
It went down to 213. So when we do transportation studies, they analyze every intersection. So you plug it in the model, they analyze every intersection that puts 25 trips through an intersection. So it could be wherever. There's no proximity distance. If it's a bigger project, you would expect it to measure further out.
Okay, it's the smaller projects that may not necessarily include that, right? If you have a six lot subdivision, they don't provide enough trips, then they may not.
That's true, except for we do the, we look at transportation lots of times. So when we do the T S P, that's where we account for everybody developing to the zoning designation. So we often hear a concern of death by a thousand cuts because we don't analyze intersections for smaller developments. But that's not entirely true because we look at the big picture approach when we do the T S P. It's just that as we move through incrementally the development process, we sort of narrow our scope and look at just the impacts of the development being proposed. But we, again, also take that macro scale when we do the T S P.
Anything else?
So just one last thing about your, you do this traffic count every three years now, public works does. But I kind of agree with planning and that with, especially with everything that's going on up on Holcomb, that that should be analyzed a little more frequently than three years. I don't know if one year, but I'm thinking maybe two years at least because I realize the workload. So just because of the number of projects and stuff that are going on up there. So that we don't get to a Beaver Creek 213 problem again. So that we don't get to a Beaver Creek 213 problem again.
Okay, well, you know, I, I, I really don't see that you're making a big difference. But if, I'd be happy to, you know, talk through it in a work session, bring it back.
What does it cost?
We spend about $25,000 for the through, the citywide count.
Citywide count. So what would it cost to do, you know, what the planning commission is talking about on an annual basis?
Well, typically those come in at, you know, $150 a pop for, you know, two days of monitoring. So it's more of the effort of trying to coordinate it, get it rolling and get the contractor out there to count, do the counts for us.
I mean, that sounds like a pretty minor expense.
Yeah.
Just another task.
Commissioner Ryan?
So what about, there is a lot of development either happening on proposed plan. Can't we kind of work those developments? And the traffic counts are, are a part of the development plans. So can't we just kind of anticipate that they can take care of some of those? And maybe, maybe shoot for the three years and maybe we'll get one in the middle. I mean, I, I agree with Commissioner Shaw that, you know, it seems like every other year would be a good target to go for at least. But utilize the developers' efforts as well.
I think that's what we're saying is, is we get, you know, in addition to what we do on our own, we get, we get developer counts more, more often. I don't know how often they're, they vary, but, you know.
I know that you never know.
I guess the other piece that I'm not really, typically, we don't do a lot of analysis of the traffic counts that we get. We post them on, online so that people can see them, but we don't go through the effort to do much analysis. So that would be an additional cost if they actually, if the expectation was that we actually did, you know, some kind of an analysis on that data as well. Commissioner May, where are you having? Any further, Commissioner Ryan?
I have a question. You know, I, I heard at the planning commission that they, you know, several thought that this whole project was a fix more than, you know, a, a resolution. And it seems like, it seems to me that, you know, even though, I mean, we certainly don't have the money to, to do it the way that we, we may want to do it. But I guess that my question is how, how does future anticipated traffic patterns? And I know we can't, you know, we don't have a crystal ball. But, you know, different car types and different transportation systems and light rail or trends for more carpooling or not driving as much. And, you know, many, many years down the, the road, maybe it would be kind of a, you know, a good thing to not put too much money into it when there's a chance that we may not necessarily need it if the traffic patterns are reduced. I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know. I haven't studied those trends, but do you know anything about that?
That is a good question. John Riplinger from McGurk Associates, our consultant, knows everything about it.
Oh, good.
There we go.
Everything in five minutes or less?
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Yeah, I think one of the things to keep in mind is that our regional transportation plan and the city's adopted transportation plan, the TSP, anticipate there will be more use of non-single occupant vehicles over the next 20 years, which does mean more carpooling, more substitution of alternative trip types. You know, whether we're talking about home deliveries like with Amazon or whoever else taking an increasing role rather than the individual going to the store and some things like that. So that's already built into our planning work. So we're anticipating a somewhat lower number of trips per capita in the future, 2035, than we have today. We're also probably anticipating that some of those trips will be accomplished by going shorter distances. And we'll still probably have a lot of relatively long commute trips, but your shopping trip may be shorter. Maybe your shopping trip will be satisfied within Oregon City rather than going to Clackamas Town Center or Washington Square. So I think we're going to see some of those things. There, I think there's also some evidence, we're at the very early stages, that we may get a higher capacity and higher throughput through intersections by having cars that are smarter and talking to each other. Maybe we can get, fit a few more cars through if we also have the, either the autonomous vehicles or at least the vehicles that are providing us with a backup system for emergency braking or things like that. So I, I don't think we are in any danger of overbuilding our transportation system. As John has pointed out and Laura, that we don't really have enough money to build as much as we would like. I think we're trying to make wise investments, make them in the areas where we can in hopes that some of the new technologies and the people's, and the changes in people's behavior patterns will allow us to achieve the mobility we need. So I, I hope that's answering the direction you were seeking in your question.
Anything further? Is there any public comment? Of course. Thank you, John. Uh, but you're not first. So Denise McGriff and Bob Mahoney, Planning Commission.
We'd be happy to let Mr. Gifford go ahead of us.
I guess I'm going to go first. Planning Commissions need a fight song. Does anybody know a good fight song for Planning Commissions?
This is Commissioner Bob Mahoney. Oregon City.
And if I go beyond three minutes, will you let me know, Mayor?
I, I've never had a problem with that.
Okay. Me going three minutes or you let me know? I guess it boils down to roles, the roles that we all play here. And Oregon City has got a very exceptional situation going here. We got three, three planners, qualified planners on that planning commission, plus a person that currently operates in the traffic industry. That's, that's exceptional. That's not going to last for, for much longer. The terms will expire. Other people will be appointed from various walks of life, many of which may not be qualified in the manner in which they, the commission is, is now. So, you know, this spike in, in this analytical dance that we're going through may, may come to an end here pretty quick. All I can say is our, our staff does an exceptional job. They really do. But keep in mind, we get back to the role, is that the planning commission by law sits as a quasi judicial body when they're considering these land use applications. And as such, they're obliged to do due diligence and be responsible for reviewing and analyzing information that's brought before us by the planning staff and testimony given to us at public hearings. That's entered into the record. That's subject to review by Luba and Courts of Appeals and things of that nature. So we're not just playing, you know, mother may I. This is serious stuff. Probably the most important document that you have in this city is the charter. Followed like that by your comprehensive plan. We're talking hundreds of millions of dollars of public funds that are going to be spent on the basis of decisions made by this council, this commission, and, and the planning commission. So the, everybody's making an effort on this transportation. I don't have a PE after my name. So I rely on John, I rely on our, our consultant and what have you. I don't sign anything in terms of a, of a, of a plan, like a building plan or subdivision or a, or, or an engineering plan. I don't do that. But what I do do is I lend my name with a vote as a quasi judicial member of a planning commission. I take that seriously. I do my due diligence. And anybody that follows me will do the same thing as they will for the elected body. So for us to make this analysis of alternative mobility studies is, is, it's a righteous thing to do. Everybody has their opinion, technical and, and personal. And the thing that I object to a little bit is the state is not stepping up and admitting its responsibility as part of its role for assuming some of the, the cost of doing business. I'm going to run out of time here, but, you know, I sound like a broken record, but that's part of the role that, that we play. So I'll turn it over to, to Denise here and she can follow up.
Denise McGriff and I, Bob and I were asked to come here tonight on behalf of the planning commission. And I want to make sure that we clarify where we were coming from. First of all, I want to acknowledge that our planning staff is correct, that it is a regional problem and we do acknowledge that it's a fix. It's not the thing that we would like to have because we don't have a big pile of money sitting around waiting for us to spend on 213 Beaver Creek Road, Redland Road. So in the meantime, we are going to try to put our finger in the dyke as much as we can to stave off the problem and we're going to try to fix it. I agree with you, Bob, that that is not fair, but it's where we are now and we have to do something because nobody else is stepping up. So we're stepping up. We hope that we will continue as a community and a city to work with, and I say this lightly, dragging, kicking and screaming our partners, the state and the county, particularly the county, into putting some money into this to help us solve the problem. I know we can get grants, but the county is, you know, pleading, we don't have any money. Well, we don't have it either, but we're still doing it anyway. So you are correct, Nancy, that it is a little bit of a fix. We don't disagree with that. Before we finished putting this memo together, we did speak with our staff. Particularly, one of the commissioners asked Mr. Lewis whether or not our suggestion was doable. He said that it was doable. He didn't say he was going to do it. He just said it was doable. We wouldn't have made a suggestion if we thought this was going to be a major impact on their staff time, but we feel, felt that it was important. We felt that basically, as we said in the memo, that we hear a lot more of the community concerns maybe on some of these issues than you do. And so we're trying to provide you the screen so that maybe you don't have to hear all of it, but we'll, we'll be there and we'll, we'll take it all in. We'll take it 100% and try to respond to our community as best we can. We do recognize that there is just a tiny flaw in some of our traffic studies that we get as part of our development. I think you put the nail on the head, Brian, when you asked about that. The thing that doesn't happen all the time is we don't, aren't able to look at the cumulative effects. So in some ways, to quote Laura, it is death by a thousand cuts. You got this development, this development, this development, this development. Even though the TSP is the broader picture, it doesn't look at all those developments that happen, say, okay, so we have this, this and this. How does that happen? We've asked John this many times and I understand the focus that the engineers look at. But, you know, planners, we, we look at everything. Everything is out there on the table. So we're, we're concerned that the cumulative effects from the increased development will and probably will add to this. And so we just want to make sure we have the knowledge and background that we understand that. If the monitoring is not able to happen on a yearly basis, I don't think, I don't know what the number is, but that's what we said. We asked him whether we thought a year would be unreasonable. We think that it will help us figure out how to anticipate what we're going to have happen.
Are you close to being done?
I'm very close.
Okay.
So we don't get to come here to talk to you very often, so I hope, I, I'm asking for a little latitude. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the Holly Lane issue. And we talked about the part in the city, out the city, in the city, out the city. And I think what we're really saying here in our memo is that we understand that it's not likely, and I, again, not likely to enter our jurisdiction, but there are problems. So how can we, again, asking our friends at the county to work with us on what may happen there? Not just the part that might come into the city, but the rest of it, because it is, we think it is an issue. So we're concerned that we're going to continue to get beat on the head by the public about Holly Lane. And we said at the end, it serves as an unnecessary distraction for more urgent transportation needs. It's out there. It's kind of poking us in the side all the time. We've explained that it's not likely to come in. We've explained that only this part may come in. But we know that there's some problems there. So again, we're asking, in effect, can we get together with the county to try to figure out what the heck is going on there? Because knowledge is power. And if we have the knowledge, we'll know more of what to do. Right now, we're sort of guessing in the dark. So with all due respect to Mr. Lewis, we would like to continue to ask that he consider that and that you ask him to consider how we could do those $150 pops. And we'll figure out how to maybe work it into the, to the staff time to do this. But again, the knowledge is important. We owe it as a commission, commissions plural, to have the information that we need to help us make decisions for the future. So we thank you. We heard more about alternative mobility standards than we ever wanted to in our lives. And, you know, we're going to hear more about it because we're going to dig deep, continue to dig deep into this to assist you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do. Is part of the rationale for requesting more frequent traffic counts?
Just in that little section. We're just, not, not for the whole Holcomb Boulevard, we're just that one area.
That it might perhaps trigger a transportation improvement sooner rather than later? Is that kind of the intent?
Yes.
Thank you.
We think that would be a good thing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much.
If you come up with any words on a fight song, let us know, will ya?
Work on that, Bob. Mr. Gifford?
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I've been following this issue of transfer, of the mobility standards for a little while now because I don't have anything else to do. And a couple of things, I testified at the planning commission. I, I basically agree with what, what needs to be done. We're in a hard place. Something has to be done. And I think a lot of compromises have been made and I support this, this change. I had two comments besides that. One is during the, during the testimony at the, at the planning commission, one individual, and I don't remember who it was, mentioned that they didn't think that a maximum volume capacity ratio of 1.0 was permissible by the state. I, I assume that's not true. I don't know. I hope that someone's looked into the, I mean, if, if we go and set our VC at one, it would be nice if we weren't breaking any laws when we did that.
Okay on that?
The, the state does allow one. In fact, our VOC at Redland in 213 is one.
Pause my timer. I'm not talking.
It is, so it is one within a regional center. We do need to go after this for alternate mobility targets. We'll go to the Oregon Transportation Commission to ask that it be up to one for the intersection that we're talking about. So it is not allowed to be one at the intersection we're talking about. This project would allow it to be one, but across the state, they do have one. One does exist. In fact, just down the road.
Great, okay. And then the last comment that I wanted to make was a couple of months ago, the, the guest speaker at the Clackamas County Business Alliance was President Tom Hughes of Metro. And he was talking about Metro's regional transportation plan. And I went up afterwards and was chatting with him about the 213 intersection. And he seemed genuinely surprised that that was a big issue. And mentioned that if we wanted money for Metro, that he doesn't recall ever having been asked. So I don't know if we're reaching out to Metro to, if, if this is a regional problem and I, I think that everybody agrees that it is. And I've heard a lot of talk about the state and I've heard a lot of talk about the county, but I haven't heard Metro drag into this. We're in an awkward position. Now, hold on, it's my time. We're in an awkward position because we just have a temporary counselor now that Carlotta, Carlotta has, has left us. So I don't know if we're going to have the full support that we would normally have had, but it would be nice to know how much we are reaching out to Metro. They seem to have a few dollars once in a while.
Yeah, but I think you're missing, you, you're missing the main point of how these, how this funding takes place. And that is, is so the regional flexible funds that Metro does dole out goes through a, a very complicated process. dole out goes through a very complicated process, starting with C4 and, and JPAC and MPAC and goes through this long drawn out process. And so, you know, we put projects forward to that list, just like every other city in Clackamas County does, and then they get voted on by C4 and other people and finally they get to this point that that's what goes forward. So not to say that Beaver Creek Road and 213 haven't been on, on the list of things we might wish to have funded, but we have to put forth the things that we think we can get done. So you, you can't ask for, you can't say ask for $5 million of regional flexible funds to put in a plot for five years so you can raise the other money to, to do the work. You have to have a project that you can spend it on today when you're asking for the money. So to say that we haven't asked Metro directly just isn't true.
I, I didn't mean to say that. I'm just saying that President Hughes didn't seem to know a whole lot about this issue.
Which surprises me greatly, but.
Well, Metro, Metro did sit on our advisory committee, technical advisory committee, and I think they participated in the community advisory committee as well.
Was that staff or was that electeds?
Staff, staff from Metro.
Maybe something didn't trickle up.
Yeah, Metro's got a lot going on in the area. Again, it's, to me, I think it's more of a factor. It's, it's not one of the worst intersections in the region. You know, for me, the question is, is, you know, when you look at priorities across the region, this is not one. And that's why Metro Council does not know about it, because it's not a traffic congestion. It's, the, the level of concern at that location is not high enough.
I actually heard the suggestion by, oh, he's gone. Maybe if we just don't do anything, it'll get bad enough to get more attention.
Thanks for your time, sir.
Thanks, Will.
Sir, any further public comment? Further questions? Is there a motion?
Move that the Commission approved Planning File LE 17-03 and the first reading of Ordinance 18-1004.
Second. Move and second is Ms. Richter?
Ordinance number, excuse me, Ordinance Number 18-1004 and ordinance of the City of Oregon City adopting alternate mobility targets for the intersection of Highway 213 and Beaver Creek Road through amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, Transportation System Plan and the Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 1204.
Further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Mingleber?
Aye.
Commissioner Ieck?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see if we can whip through these things real quick here. So we're on the 18-194, Resolution 18-12, renaming Carnegie Library Park to Library Park. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Today, we're gonna be discussing a recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to rename Carnegie Library Park to Library Park. Have a very short PowerPoint presentation and then we'll open it up for discussion. There we go. So first off, a little background on the project. Carnegie Library Park is located between John Adams and Jefferson and between 7th Street and 6th Street. It's a 1.32 acre park and it is a charter park. Park amenities, this is, there we go. Park amenities does contain our Oregon City Public Library. We have a playground, spray park, open lawn areas, planting beds. The land was dedicated by John, Dr. John McLaughlin in the mid 1800s as a public square. It's listed as Block 102 in our charter. The Oregon City Public Library was constructed on that site in 1913 using funds procured from Andrew Carnegie. He dedicated $12,500 and asked that the city provide ongoing operation support of $1,250 annually. Carnegie Library Park, in 2006, the City Commission officially named the park Carnegie Library Park by Resolution Number 0601. It was never formally dedicated before that time, but it was known as Library Park from roughly 1913 when the library went in until the present time and actually is still known by many locals as Library Park. The Oregon City Public Library was built in 2016 on the site, the new expanded library, which I'm sure everyone is aware of and very excited about. So as far as the, the park renaming process, we do have a process to name and rename our park facilities. A couple different features of that, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee needs to form an ad hoc subcommittee to consider the proposals. That ad hoc subcommittee will then make a recommendation to PrAC to change the name of the park. PrAC would then vote by motion to recommend a name change to go before City Commission and then the City Commission would vote by resolution to adopt the, the new name. We held public meetings, seven of them in total, from March 2017 through December 2017. Additionally, we did additional outreach through the neighborhood associations and the CIC. During that time, we received public feedback. We had a variety of responses ranging from Carnegie Library Park, Carnegie Park and Library Park. Very minimal responses in total. I think we had four individuals total that responded. We did receive a recommendation from the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association to change the name back to Library Park, which is what is known by many residents within our community. The PrAC discussion that, that occurred throughout the public involvement process was on the current and future use of the site. What came forward, which I thought was of particular interest, was the thought process after the library left the location. So when the library left and was not there between 95 and 2010, and then again, it was adopted as Carnegie Library Park in 2006, a thought process of those involved was that the, they weren't sure the library was going to be returning. And during that time, it was to recognize that there was a Carnegie building on the site and that was the thought process. Those that were involved, Doug Neely was involved in the initial petition and then also involved as a member of PrAC in voting to change the name back to Library Park officially to recognize it as the permanent home of the Oregon City Public Library. So the name recommendation from PrAC, the December 7, 2017 meeting, was voted unanimously to change the name from Carnegie Library Park to Library Park and to make a formal recommendation to City Commission. So you have two options available to you this evening. Adopt the resolution and change the name officially to Library Park, or if you take no action at the meeting tonight, to maintain the name of Carnegie Library Park. Thank
Question. So now that the former Carnegie Library is attached to our new library, what is that older section called?
Well, the Carnegie Center will be recognized on new signage. It'll go on the corner of 7th and John Adams. It'll list Oregon City Public Library, Library Park and Carnegie Center. So it will be recognized as.
Who made that decision? Carney Center.
Is it Carnegie, Carnegie Library? Is that what it was? Carnegie Library. So the Carnegie building will be recognized on the signage. Carnegie Library will be recognized on the signage in smaller print underneath the Oregon City Public Library in a larger block and Library Park and Carnegie Library in smaller block.
Okay, thank you.
Questions for discussion?
I just have a comment. I mean, I would honor the recommendations of PrAC and, you know, change it to Library. I don't have a problem with that, but I do, I like Carnegie Park.
And there was a lot of discussion around Andrew Carnegie's, although providing funding for the library not really having an association with the park itself and that Dr. McLaughlin having more of a connection with the park.
So Phil, there's gonna be two signs. There used to be two signs before the new addition and there's gonna be two signs again, correct?
There, there will be a sign on 6th and John Adams and there will be a sign on 7th and John Adams.
And what's on 6th and John Adams?
The sign on 6th and John Adams will be the name of the park, Library Park, if that is voted by the Commission.
And then on 7th?
On 7th will say Oregon City Public Library in a larger block and then in smaller font will say Library Park and Carnegie Library.
Okay. So Carnegie there, all right.
Yes.
Okay.
And there was a subcommittee that was put together from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the Library Board and representatives of staff from both of those departments.
Okay. Other questions? Denise McGriff?
Denise McGriff, Oregon City, representing myself and the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. So just to, to append to Phil Lewis's presentation, prior to the Carnegie Library being constructed, there were two signs that were fundraised by the Neighborhood Association and the community. Both wood. The one on the corner of 6th and John Adams said Library Park and it was hand carved wooden and sat there until it disappeared. The other sign was the wooden one that said Carnegie Center, which we recognized was not part of that, but part of that was reused. So we spent, I say we, so members of PrAC, a member of the Library Board, members of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, as Phil said, met for, what was it, a couple, two or three meetings?
Yeah, three meetings.
Three meetings with Maureen to work on the name. And again, we had the several people who have background in history, including Karen Maureen, who provided us some information to PrAC about the fact that, as Phil said, Mr. Carnegie had nothing to do with the library. Everyone in the town knows it is Library Park and we were completely taken aback when we found out that in 2006 it had been changed to like, to Carnegie Library Park. And when we found out why, we said, "Well, that doesn't work. He had nothing to do with it." Library Park is the traditional name. We, again, have provided some small amount of funds to help to pay for the new signs that were taken. And we support the recommendation of PrAC. There was, there was a lot of work that went into this and it is Library Park. So we hope that you will concur with that and put it back to the name that everybody knows it has. And I think you'll be very pleased with the new signage and the design of the signage. It's, it's going to be even better than the hand carved one that was there before with the gold leaf inset. It's gonna be absolutely stunning and fit the setting a lot better. The one for the library, for the park will not have gold inset and be as, but it'll be carved. It'll be nice. It'll look as nice as the one that was there. And I wish I'd known, I would've brought the little pictures of the proposed sign.
Oh, the signage, yeah.
They're in a different folder. But anyway, we hope that you will adopt that recommendation and the community thanks you and thank you.
All right, thanks Denise.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion? I gotta get back. Hang on. Okay. Move to approve Resolution Number 18-12, renaming Carnegie Library Park to Library Park.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Mingleber?
Aye.
Commissioner Ieck?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Well, if we can get through these last two. PC 18-055, Resolution Number 18-13, suspending grievance process of the Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 2.30.060, allow for a process of identifying improvements. Ms. Turway?
Thank you very much. The Oregon City Municipal Code codified the Citizen Involvement Committee in Chapter 2.30 of our code. Within that, there's a subsection that allows the CIC to process grievances for people who feel that they were adversely affected by the CIC itself, the CIC members or the neighborhood associations. The CIC has processed a few of these grievances recently and within that, they've recognized some opportunities for improvements to perhaps the code language as well as the process. And so they have asked that the City Commission allow the CIC to stop processing grievances while they work on the process. So this resolution is a request that would suspend the grievance portion of the code, thereby allowing the CIC to work on the process for improvements. They've identified the process for improvements to grievances in a work plan and in their goals plan as well. And this would suspend the grievance language until that work plan is done and adopted, if it needs to be. And then also, at the very latest, it would be December 31 of this year. So you have a set date if the process drags on for a long time. With that, I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
So what happens to the grievances in the process again? They, they just get tabled?
No. So we would continue to process ones that are in the door. We would just shut the door until their review is done or December 31. So if it's in, it's in.
According to the current code?
So, CIC is the only one that has a grievance procedure? No other committee in the city has a kind of a grievance procedure?
None that I'm aware of, no.
So I'm just wondering if we, why we even have it? Well, and I think that's a good question to ask. Some of the problems I see with this, and I'm more than happy to, you know, vote to, to suspend this while somebody works on it, but from what I've seen over the, my last three years as being mayor, that the grievance process really isn't about any real problem anywhere. And since we all recognize that the neighborhood associations are not officially part of the city's system per se, that the neighborhoods, you know, they come to the CIC, but this is, it's all really supposed to be about, you know, getting and giving information. It's not supposed to be someplace to take fight. And that's what this, this grievances have become. And so, you know, the neighborhoods have had to work out their own issues. I, you know, certainly early on in my tenure, Park Place had an issue, but they somehow worked it out. And Canema's had issues and Berkeley Hills has had issues and so forth and so on. But I think when we start doing in this, this grievance process thing, then, you know, there's an expectation that there would be some result. But even if a grievance is found to be, you know, real, there are no consequences. There is no process. There is no ability for the city to do anything about it. So, you know, it seems to me, if you're gonna have a law, that there ought to be some consequences of, you know, violating that law. And, you know, I don't want us to be in the middle of adjudicating issues between the Neighborhood Association and its members or the Neighborhood Association and the CIC. It's really supposed to be, that whole thing is supposed to be about either them getting information to us or us getting information to them. That's all it's supposed to be about, in, in my opinion. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move to approve Resolution Number 18-13, suspending the grievance process of Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 2.30.060, to allow for a process of identifying
Second.
Move and second is further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Mingleber?
Aye.
Commissioner Ieck?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So on to 18-196, acquisition of a Fur Street property zone to general industrial. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So tonight, we're asking you to authorize the purchase and sales agreement of a property on Fur Street. Before I get into that, I just want to mention a couple of things. The prior owner and occupier of this was a longtime Oregon City business. And Martin, are you, maybe Martin can come up too, because we've kind of been tag teaming on this particular property and I think you may have questions that he can help answer as well. So General Distributors has been in this property for, what I've read in the paper, of 97 years, four generations. It's a big loss. They, at one point in time, employed 197 employees, again, what I read in the paper. So surprised to hear that they were acquired and that the, the, the... So surprised to hear that they were acquired and that Columbia Distributing, who acquired them, they made the decision to close that plant. Opportunities arise in interesting ways. As you know, we've been working due diligently on our existing site, and we continue to work diligently on our existing site, but-
No, he's still good. It's just that we're out of gas.
Okay, sorry. We work diligently. Can I say that again? Diligently.
You started off from the beginning.
We're very diligent.
What are we doing?
So with that, we reached out to the owners of this building and property, and we thought it would be a good opportunity for us to pursue for use as an operations center site. And so we've talked about that with you folks as well. This is the site itself. It's mostly warehouse space with some office space. The actual address is listed here, but really, we've got about just under five acres of property. And again, most of that is warehouse space. It's an impressive warehouse space, and we've had a chance to look through that property, just walk through it for the most part. Lots of onsite parking. It's got a fueling station with a couple of 10,000 gallon tanks, so diesel and gas. It's got loading docks, which are not exactly what we need, but it's got lots of loading docks. It's fenced, it's got a security system, and it's currently vacant. They vacated the building. So we've been working really since March. Both Martin and I have been kind of working on different phases of trying to figure out what that property might mean and how we might acquire it. And so we're bringing to you a decision to acquire that property, and with the understanding that we've got 60 days of due diligence period to look at the site, check out the work that's already been done on the environmental assessments, look at the building structurally, and just kind of, you know, facility-wide, electrical, mechanical, all those kinds of things. You're familiar probably with this side of the building, or these pictures of the building, because you can see these from the street. Inside the buildings, other than the showroom where they sold a lot of product, these are kind of the typical kind of offices. They're 1970s vintage kind of offices, nice, but, you know, low ceilings and not a lot of window space. Obviously, their electrical room is, needs a fair amount of work. So we've got a lot of due diligence to do on it. This is a variety of pictures of the quote warehouse space. There's also a small purchase in this decision that includes $13,100 for some racking systems that were in there, and three pallet jacks, if you will, high straws and pallet jacks. Again, we're out kind of just checking out the site from yard capacity. There's lots of yard space as well that we think we can reconfigure to better meet our needs. You can see in the lower left-hand picture, that large-scale truck, so lots of maneuverability space in that yard that would help our needs. So we see this as a good option for Public Works. We've talked about incorporating the operational needs of our Parks Department. We've been, the City Commission's looked at other opportunities for Parks Department. This could solve both those needs in one property and give us the opportunity to utilize those other properties in, you know, other ways that would both still continue to support the operational needs of the city, but not as planned with, you know, that, the existing site for Public Works to be the central location. So with that, if you've got any questions about this property, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
You said that there was a Phase One, Phase Two environmental study done. Are there any significant findings? Any large costs involved with addressing those issues?
Not as reported by the broker that we've been working with. They were waiting for this decision before they actually shared those documents with us. Martin's been working on getting an environmental contractor to dive right into those. We expect to get those as early as maybe tomorrow or the next day.
Do we know how old the Phase Two is?
It's fairly new.
March 20th, this, March 20th of this year. Yeah, there's a Phase One and a Phase Two report that was done by Columbia Distribution when they acquired the property. We have a team of inspectors and consultants lined up to start entering the property once we get approval from you and enter the due diligence, to review all of the documents that will be provided to us, and then do any additional site analysis that we need to do to feel comfortable with making the final purchase.
Okay.
The property owners also signed the purchase and sales agreement early, recognizing that our concerns that we approve it, and then, you know, maybe there might be a, for me, it was a concern that maybe last minute they'd want to change, but they've agreed to sign it first, so that's a good thing as well.
Any other questions?
So John, essentially, if everything goes well with our review, we would not be bringing this back to the commission unless there were changes, correct?
Right.
How long do you-
Significant changes.
How long do you anticipate the due diligence period to take? Couple months?
60 days is what we gave ourselves.
We anticipate being able to get done within that time.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Lewis and Mr. Montalvo about all the work they've put into Center Street, and, because I will tell that to anybody, because that was the most prudent thing to do at the time, is to rebuild where we're at. But this has come for us now, and this is now the most prudent thing to do. So for Public Works and for Parks, and this helps us take care of a lot of facilities, as you can see, that's one of our goals over here, is to make sure we have critical facility needs met. So look forward to this.
Any else?
Can you talk a little bit about the funds? I'm assuming that the funds have been set aside. There's not an additional ask of the general fund, or?
Right, that's a, that's a great question. So for really, all of the time that I've been here, and even a little before that, the city has been setting aside funding for Operation Center at 122 South Center Street, right? We've been plugging away money, and we've managed to save $12.5 million that was going to be used for Phase One of the Center Street site. You know, we still have a lot of site needs beyond this site here, so we need to preserve as much of that as we can, but this, getting this building gets us a fair distance to the finish line on our operation center. We still want to look at whether or not we're talking a remodel or a new building on this site. Obviously, not the warehouse space, but, you know, the front end of the building, does that make more sense to do that, or to, you know, revamp what's there? Don't know that question yet. That'll be, that'll be beyond probably the due diligence. We'll probably hire an architect that'll help us answer that question, but yeah, that's, so we foresee a $7.1 million getting us a site, and the balance of that to look at improvements on this site and on the Center Street site.
To piggyback off someone in John, one of the first consultants who's coming out as a structural engineer is going to evaluate the warehouse structures and the administrative structure. We, as, you know, first responders in Public Works, we have a responsibility, we have to be in a seismically stable facility, and they'll be giving us a seismic rating for the existing facilities, and then giving us a cost estimated level of effort for retrofit and renovation versus other options. So we'll bring that to you after the sales agreement.
Yeah. All right, the other thing that, oh, I'm sorry.
So I know that all of your operations staff and crew will be located there. What about the operations, or not, the Public Works staff that are located here at City Hall? Are you gonna be moving them over there too, or do you not know all that yet?
That's not our plan. That's not our plan at this time.
Okay. I was just curious.
Maureen, your, this building isn't that old. I would think that there should be some seismic standards already in place on this, so.
So the original, I mean, the building, the site was actually constructed in three phases. The original construction was in 1972. It consists of the original warehouse, the east and the east wing. The west wing offices and the main warehouse were added in the mid-'80s, and then the clear span warehouse, I'm not sure when that was added. So I would expect, and from what we've seen, the clear span in the main warehouse look like they have some seismic resiliency. The original warehouse and the wings, we've gone in there where it's basically stripped down, and in terms of any sort of seismic resiliency outside of the fact that it's wood frame construction, I don't see much.
Good.
I'll add the caveat, I'm not an engineer, so.
Further questions? Is there a motion?
I move to authorize the purchase and sales agreement and receipt for earnest money between GDIRE Acquisition LLC and the City of Oregon City for 13895 First Street in the amount of $7,100,000, as well as personal property in the amount of $13,100.
Second.
So I'm just gonna say one thing before we vote on this, and that is, is that I have always said that the upper yard and the Center Street site were not the best place for Public Works to be. But in the intervening years, there have never been a site available that would suit the city's needs, and to be fiscally responsible, that was our only choice at the time. It's interesting that this site showed up just about the time that we were finishing up the litigation on whether the upper yard is a park. The city prevailed on that, so I think that question is pretty well settled at this point. I do want to be clear that we aren't gonna make any decisions on what use might happen at that upper yard site for at least a year or more, depending on how everything goes with this, you know, facility. Again, you never know about a deal until it's done, and so we have our 60-day timeframe. We don't know what's buried up there or anything else, so we'll let that play out, assuming we get it and we're able to build a facility. Just want the community as a whole to understand that we're not making any snap decisions on what's going to happen with that city-owned property. So with that being said, call roll.
Aye.
Commissioner Ieck?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Anybody want to pull any consent agenda?
Moved to approve. Oops, sorry.
That's all right. Go ahead.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Mingleberg. Call the roll.
Commissioner Mingleberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Ieck?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay. So, Mr. Manager?
I just have one update tonight, and really, it's just, you know, I believe the Commissioners are aware of this, but just wanted to acknowledge and congratulate Chief Ban and Officer Day. They received a $25,000 grant that can be utilized to help homeless veterans here in the community. So that's another $25,000 on top of a $50,000 that they've already been able to put together. So just congratulations, great job. I think that, you know, we kind of took this idea of a homeless liaison officer, and it's really proven to be an asset, I believe, for the community, for the police department, for our other staff here in the, in the city, and it's becoming a model. So very, very proud of what they've been able to accomplish and the efforts that they put into that. So just want to say congratulations to them. That's all that I have for tonight.
Commissioner Shaw, you got anything?
Got a couple. Got to work the Main Street booth downtown for the courthouse. Very low turnout because of the sideways rain, I believe, but after that, after that, I went down and toured the Elks Club. I haven't been down there for a long time, but, you know, they've done some improvements there, so I'm glad they're gonna be hanging around down there, so that's pretty cool. And as usual, I go to the Clackamas County Business Alliance and talk about all the great things that are happening in Oregon City, so unfortunately, I usually have to follow Mayor Knapp from Wilsonville, and he talks about his six urban renewal projects he has going on, so.
Never give Mayor Knapp a microphone.
Yeah, I know. But as I told him there, I said, you know, you might be the king of urban renewal, but I'm the king of Main Street right now, so, you know, that kind of stopped him a little bit. Anyway, I think that's, oh, cool. Yeah, that's it.
Commissioner Mingleberg, you got any?
I was with Commissioner Shaw and Main Street, as most of us were in the rain.
Fortunately, it got closed before my shift started, so I got to stay home.
Lucky you.
Do you have anything, Commissioner? Yeah, I think everything's been covered at this point, so if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned.